Hey Father, we just take time to acknowledge you. Jesus, we ask you crown this evening with your presence, your wisdom. Corn your word, you said, if evil lack wisdom, he should ask of God who gives freely. We pray for everything that's said and done be done freely tonight in your wisdom, and may the spirit of congeality be done. And we just make your fortune. In Jesus' name we pray. We say amen.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30, May 1st, 2023, and we'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Him.
Here.
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 Stepped out for a minute.
And we have a quorum. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda, and we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. Just one quick change to the agenda this evening. We've been requested by Councilmember Hicks to remove item number three from the consent agenda. Because that involves a donation on behalf of his company, he has to abstain.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion approving the agenda as amended.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent.
So will Scott.
Thank you. Second, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings, there are no bids to award, and there are no petitions or communications this evening. As Andrew mentioned, under the consent agenda, we will be removing item number three, which leaves us with three items. If anyone would like to speak to any of those items individually, we can remove those as well. Or we could pass the consent agenda with a resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Tom?
I'll second.
Thank you. Jim? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution accepting donations to the Fergus Falls Fire Department for two air monitors and authorizing any necessary budget adjustments. Again, that is pulled just so that we can...
I will offer that.
Thank you. Jim? Second. Thank you, Laura. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution accepting donations to the Fergus Falls Fire Department for two air monitors and authorizing any necessary budget adjustments. Again, that is pulled just so that we can...
I will offer that.
Thank you. Jim? Second. Thank you, Laura. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Yes.
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 Yes. The resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we have a first reading of ordinance 37, eighth series, amending City Code Chapter 90, dealing with noise violation that's been discussed at the previous two meetings, I believe. We just need someone to introduce that this morning.
I'll introduce that.
Thank you, Tom.
It's been a long day. It's this morning.
I did the same thing.
What's that? You said this morning. I have no idea. It's not this morning, nothing like that. Okay. I take your word for it, Jim. Item number two is a resolution directing council members, Kramire and Councilmember Thompson, to participate in mediation. Again, this was discussed at a council retreat, and again, at last Wednesday's committee of the whole. If someone would like to offer a resolution to that effect...
I'll offer it.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Kramire, please.
As I stated two other times, I am not a complainant on anything that Brent Thompson may have done. As I had mentioned, it was brought up on behalf of a third ward member, community member, that I brought it up for that individual. I also had Rolf, when that was brought up, our city attorney, make sure that I was not listed as a complainant. I was listed as a witness to a certain extent, was not a complainant, and that was the complaint, and was actually City Hall, is how it was worded. Also, too, the other complainant was in Ward Two, which was another individual. I have not brought up anything with Brent Thompson's name. There's nothing on the record that I have that was said publicly with his name, and it is not between Brent Thompson and I. What I'm a little bit surprised at is it seems like there's something trying to be made of nothing, and I don't understand that. I have nothing to say about Brent Thompson. If I wanted to say something, I would have done that at a town hall meeting, or I would have done it other ways. So if I wanted to say something, and if we wanted to get into an argument, that's what I would have done. I've done nothing on that. So I don't know why we're making something, in my opinion, out of nothing. And it just seems like we're trying to create something so we can't focus on other things so we can move ahead. I've already moved ahead, and I respectfully decline any type of mediation. Thank you.
Scott?
You know, Al, you and I have talked about this before we were sworn in, and I said, you've got to resolve this between you and Thompson. You said, I want to wait until Secretary of State gets back with his letter. Is that what, not, did you not say that?
No, I did not, because that was Mark Layton, who's here in the audience tonight.
No, no, we sat in the backyard, and you said, I want to resolve. She said, I'm waiting for the Secretary of State. Came from you. And I, so then later on, we said, Al, when's this going to be over with? And you said to me, right outside the door, when he's gone. And I said, Al, come on, we've got to figure this out. And you said, no, we're not going to have the discussion anymore.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And if I may rebuttal to that, that was not in public?
That was between you and I?
You're right.
And the other thing, too, is what I find unusual is, why are we talking about this when we have a council member who's actually walked out of a council meeting, and there wasn't any type of action with mediation between, let's say, the mayor and Councilman Hicks? You know, we can all disagree, but this is what I want to have happen, you guys. I want to have a dialogue in open where everything is transparent. That's how we can come to some agreements, and we can get some work done. And Scott, as far as the Secretary of State, that was not my complaint.
And I didn't know that was, who it was, but you just, I asked, we had to resolve this, and you said...
Let's not, let's just not direct comments to...
I just think, best thing would be to do is mediation, get, just sit down and talk with this lady and move ahead. Mike has done a very good job with it. Don't cost us nothing. It'll be a good thing.
And just, I just want to make a point for clarification. It was at a public meeting that all council members, all elected officials in attendance agreed. It wasn't directed towards any one particular council member, but it was an agreement upon, by the entire council that was in attendance at that meeting. It would be the best for the city, and it would be best for the council if there was some professional mediation attempted, that we could move forward as a council. That's what the council decided. It wasn't me, it wasn't any individual member, it was the decision of the council at a public meeting, by the all, all unanimous agreement by those who were present. So that's the resolution that's on the table. We're going to call on that if people want to speak, I think, yes.
Was that at that retreat?
Yeah.
So, you know, there again, too, as I mentioned, I was unable to attend that. Brent was unable to attend it also. You know, I don't know why. I know what my excuse was. And I think, you know, it'd be nice if you're going to do something of that nature and talk about a council person that they should be there. We could have done that at a committee as a whole, or at a meeting like this. It just doesn't seem quite maybe the venue for that. But I guess that's what, if that's what you want to vote, I respectfully decline. And if Mr. Thompson wants to proceed with talking to someone, that's fine, but I will decline that. Thank you.
And just so you know, my father is a vulnerable adult, and I had to basically care for him that day, so that way you know where I'm at. All right. So we have a resolution, and a second on the floor. Any other last comments before we call for the vote?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
So, we have previously spoke that we need to have both parties in agreement to this, correct?
Yeah.
For this mediation. So, Councilmember Al Kramire is declining at this point, so we don't have, you know, two parties to do mediation.
Yeah. The way I understand it, and someone can step in and correct me if I'm wrong, the resolution is directing, that that's the direction that the council wanted to see. Of course, you do, I think you make a good point. You need two willing participants to undergo that mediation, and if the participants choose not to, I guess that's their choice, and the council can take whatever action they decide at that time. But the resolution is just follow-up to the public meeting that was held, where the unanimous consent of the council was to ask the two members to participate in mediation for the betterment of the entire group and for the city. So that's all we can do, and that's what the resolution's on the floor at this time. So, roll call, please.
Kramire.
No.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The resolution is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $727,647.92. If anyone has any questions relating to those claims, we will direct them to our finance director, Scott.
Couple of questions.
Well, let's get a resolution on the floor.
I will offer the resolution.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Go ahead, Scott.
There was, on the, on the, let me get to the right page here. On the list of expenses, the first one will be refer, refer to Amy Taylor. There's an expense of $53,000 for a scoreboard that involves the Youth Baseball Association. And I just thought it would be good to have some of the details of that explained for us a little more clearly.
Thanks, Scott.
Guy.
Sure. Thank you for the question, Scott. So the scoreboard that's being replaced is original to the field, which, what year was it built? Ninety-five?
Yes, because I was just commander, so it was incoming commander.
So it's an older board, older technology. It was actually hit by lightning. We got an insurance claim payout, and we were able to repair it enough so that it was functional, but there was some features of it that were not working. So Youth Baseball Association came up with an offer to fund a replacement of that scoreboard. So they're coming up with seventy-some thousand dollars to cover the cost of this scoreboard. What you're approving tonight is just the upfront cost of that scoreboard, and they will be reimbursing us the cost of that plus some for the installation.
Okay. Thank you, Guy.
Is the installation going to be done by city staff, or by...
No, actually, installation is pretty much done. There's a little wiring left to do, but it was done by Otter Electric. So if you want to go out there and take a look, it's beautiful board, it's got up-to-date functionality, it'll keep track of hits, runs, errors in more detail than the scoreboard in the past has. So it's a nice state-of-the-art scoreboard, and we really appreciate the Youth Baseball Association's help with that. It's been a great project.
Thanks, Guy. Anything else, Scott? Any other questions for Guy? Roll call, please.
Kramire.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The resolution is approved. There are no board, committee, or department reports this evening, as well as there are no staff or administrative office reports. Under old business, there's two items that I'm aware of. First is a housing tax rebate program discussion, and we'll call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. If you will recall, back in January, we did an overview of our tax rebate program, and at that time, there was some discussion about ways that maybe the program could be updated to better fit with the goals of the city of Fergus Falls. So I thought we could continue that discussion tonight. We have received a few new applications for the program. My hope is that we will have a public hearing for them at our next council meeting, but before that, I thought maybe we could touch back on the program itself and see where you guys are sitting with some of those update recommendations. So do I have... Just as a reminder, what the original intent of the program is, to encourage the construction of primary residence, single, and two-family housing units, and encourage replacement of dilapidated housing structures within Fergus Falls between January 1st, 2020, and December 31st, 2024. So this program is essentially, at this point, a mirror of what the county is doing with their big build program. So we adopted it after the county put theirs into place. We do have the option to make changes to better fit with what the city of Fergus Falls would like to be, see happening. This does not mean that the county would be making similar changes. This would just be discussion that affects the city of Fergus Falls. Here are our current rules. So program approvals are supposed to be in before construction begins. Primary residences only. We don't have it open to rentals at this point in time, and applicants can be a future homeowner, or a builder, or developer, and then that tax rebate, if it's a developer, would pass down to the first owner of the home. So that's just briefly what the rules are. So these are possible updates, points of discussion, based on the discussion we had back in January. These are not necessarily things that staff think, like, we have to do these things, these are things that we should discuss and see if you would like to take them further. So first up would be putting in a definition of what a significant rehab is. The program has always had the chance to address significant rehabs, but we've never actually defined what that means. Even at the county level, I think they're just now starting to work with a definition of significant rehab that includes a 50% increase to the footprint of a home. So after a little bit of research, I do have a definition that we could put into our program language. Things like roofing, siding, windows, painting, or landscaping would not be counted as significant rehab. It would be adding on actual livable footprint, and I think these should be things that are in discussion with the county assessor's office to see, you know, what could the increase be based on some of these changes? Brent, did you have a question?
Now, you're talking on the rehab, that they have to expand?
Yes.
Because, I mean, you get some of these houses, like, you take mine, for instance. I mean, literally, the square footage is enough, but you have outdated wiring, you have outdated plumbing. I mean, if somebody were to come in and literally do a gut down to the studs, new siding, new windows, new roof, and everything, I would think that would be, you know, is that something that could be acceptable? Because some of these people can get those kind of homes for a song, well, not quite a song anymore, but they literally can come in and say, okay, I got it for this much, that's more than what it would have cost me just to put in a foundation. And then this way, they can come in and rewire it, replumb it, new windows, siding, and everything else, and stick within the same footprint of the house and still have the square footage. I mean, and that literally is going to greatly, you know, up the tax base and everything else on it, too.
Well, you could argue that that would be significant, permanent structural alteration, making changes like that. So again, it would, I think what staff would recommend is that it would be up to the applicant to have that conversation with the county assessor's office and say, this is the project that I'm planning. Does it seem as though these changes will significantly increase the taxes that I can get back on this home, and then translate to an actual rebate as part of the program? So before they would make that application, they should have those discussions with the assessor's office.
Yeah, because, I mean, that's something I'd be totally behind, because, I mean, that gives a lot of these lower-income families the ability to get a house, hopefully at a good price, gut it, and literally, it's a brand-new house.
So along with potentially defining a significant rehab, right now, our program is not available for people who own rental properties. So if they're building a home to then rent it out, they are not approved to be part of the program. Along those same lines, should they be hoping to make significant updates to a property that they rent out? They don't have that option. So the option could be there for you to include significant rehab for rental properties in the program as well. Yes, Al?
Is this basically the same type of program that was called the This Old House Program twenty-some years ago? And those of you who are here maybe know that. Is that similar, or is that, am I way off base trying to make that comparison?
Go ahead, Bill.
I was familiar with that program, too. I think that one excluded a certain amount of value from the taxes, so in essence, your taxes were lower for a period of time. This one, you're getting a refund of your taxes back. You actually pay the taxes on the, this old house, you never paid the taxes. Now you'd actually get a refund back up to five years or $5,000, whichever comes first, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Some other possible updates would be placing a cap on the value of eligible new builds. So in the application that you guys see every time we have one of these in front of you, there's a place where the applicant puts what the estimated value of the home will be. So, and this has been, I think, the biggest point of contention with decisions that council has made in the past, is, you know, is there a point where the value of this home is higher than we would like to be incentivizing? And is there a place where we could put a cap so that you feel that entry-level homes are maybe receiving more of the focus versus homes that are maybe higher-end and maybe aren't necessarily seeing the same benefit that somebody doing an entry-level build would see in a program like this? And then, oh, yeah.
I have a question. You get $350,000 there. $350,000 nowadays doesn't build much of a home.
Yep. Just an example, just a jumping off point.
Is there some kind of a metric from the, you know, FHA or something like that that defines what, you know, an entry-level home, or, I mean, do they have, do you know what I mean? Like, where we could link it to that metric that, you know, that would adjust with the housing values and markets and all of that good stuff, so that we don't have to come up with some arbitrary figure and then, you know, constantly reevaluate that? Maybe something to look into?
That is certainly something we can look into.
Okay. Thank you.
And then one of the final points of discussion that we had in January was the possibility of using this program to incentivize first-time homebuyers. At the county level, they have a separate program that allows for first-time homebuyers to receive an incentive. They are not running it through their tax rebate program. At this point in time, the city of Fergus Falls does not have a separate program, so it is a possibility that we could tie it in. However, from a staff perspective, I think maybe it would make the most sense for the actual administration of the tax rebate program to maybe have that as a separate discussion if that is something that council is interested in looking into further.
I mean, I was obviously the member that brought that up, and I think that, you know, I think it would be a good way, you know, of allowing, you know, first-time buyers to get in if we could, you know, if they could come to the city, get pre-qualified, you know, then when they go for a loan, you know, it would be the same type of thing as getting pre-qualified for a mortgage, that, you know, that would, that would help reduce some of the costs of initially getting into a home, you know, so that they have a better opportunity to buy a home in the first place and not get outbid by somebody that already has a home, you know, and the collateral to kind of buy it and raise the price. So, and whether it's within this program or a separate program, I think it's a good, a good direction to go.
Thanks, Anthony.
So I think, I think maybe what would be good for tonight is to narrow in on any of these changes that you would like to see happening to the rebate program, and then identify maybe possible other program exploration that can happen outside of that conversation. So is there interest from the rest of the council to look into some kind of first-time homebuyer program separate from the tax rebate program?
I think if we're giving people, you know, $5,000 to build a $1.8 million home, I think then it should be something that the council considers to help somebody that's starting out in life buy a $150,000 home.
Make a motion to add a...
I'm making a motion, so I think...
Thank you.
I would second that.
So we have a motion to include first-time homebuyers as part of this program?
I'm not sure that was...
I think it was a...
To explore it separately.
To explore it separately.
Explore separately. Got it, sorry.
No problem.
So we have a motion to explore first-time homebuyers separately from this program. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. That motion carries. We're also going to set a public hearing this evening, and I think some of these other issues, we could, council, tell me if you feel differently, but we could have staff bring back some of the recommendations at that time for this program, such as the, you know, is there a benchmark that Councilmember Ruffer brought up, some of the other items that could have some further discussion? Is it, we have that discussion on the 15th when we bring it back for the public hearing? Is that fine with the council?
Yep.
Yeah, Scott, please.
I could just add a couple of other comments that could be included. I think that it's clear that the council for the city of Fergus has maybe got a few different priorities that we'd like to see addressed that are beyond the scope of what the county does and what they initially, you know, the reason this thing got started in the first place. They came with an idea that they wanted to get more houses, and we'd like to get more houses, too, but we'd also like to see houses fixed up that are already here, and we talked about rentals and things like that. So as far as the priorities that the city would have, we're interested in rehabs, we're interested in rentals, we're increasing, we're interested in increasing our tax base, and those are all good things. They're probably a little beyond where this started, or they're clearly beyond where this began, and so it might mean additional separate programs, such as a first-time homebuyers deal, or something that's specific for renters, or rehab, or whatever, or maybe it can be included in this. That I don't know. The last comment I guess I would make would, we made a commitment to run this through to the end of the year, and if we were going to make some changes or add some other things, I think that's fine, but I think they ought to start in January 2024 so that we would honor the commitment that we made. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Scott. With that, we would look for a resolution to set the hearing for May 15th for the existing applications for the tax, housing tax rebate program.
I will offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Jim? Someone like to second that resolution?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. And at that time, we can also have staff bring back any recommendations of the items that were discussed this evening, if that's fine with the council. Any other questions for Clara or any other staff? Roll call, please.
Kramire.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That resolution is approved. Thank you, Clara. Second item under old business is town hall meeting discussion. Again, this came out of the council retreat that was held in April. It was also discussed at the committee of the whole meeting. I guess right now, we're just looking, you know, we've had a chance to discuss it, we'll allow people to make any comments they'd like, but I think more than anything, we're giving staff the directions so that they can fulfill the wishes of the council. So if there's someone who'd like to make a motion, Tom?
I'll offer it.
What's the motion?
I would, I would make a motion that the town hall meetings are not to be held in council chambers unless a quorum of the council decides to make an exception.
Thank you, Tom. Someone like to second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. Discussion.
I'd like to speak.
Please.
There again, you know, I kind of beat my head against the wall as I keep telling the same story over and over. As I mentioned, that was a campaign promise. It was located here in the council chambers because it was offered up by the administrator at a meeting, and it seemed to be very well-received. The first meeting went very well, it seemed. We had a great discussion on streets, we had a good discussion on Stanton, and we touched on other items too. You know, I actually drove down Stanton and looked at what was being done down there or gonna be done. I understood what, what Cecily was saying tonight. I don't know if any of you have driven down there and looked at that, but if you walk out the front, out of her front door, you'll get hit by a biker or somebody because it's that close. As far as having the, the meetings here, if you would look at the flyer, it says everyone is welcome. Council members are very welcome. I cannot help that you decide not to come, Mr. Ruffer. And, you know, if you're gonna, are you gonna be coming when there's a, to make a quorum? You know, everybody's welcome. Everybody here in this whole room is welcome. And I made that statement many, many times over. I know that you say you do not want to squelch freedom of speech, but your actions are showing me otherwise. And that's what's frustrating to me. You know, I didn't say it, but other people said it that night. This is the people's house. This is the people's house. But I also asked, I tried to get ahold of Lynn, and I tried to get ahold of Andrew, and they were at a meeting. So I talked to Bill on Thursday. And I said, Bill, I know that you're kind of the second-in-command here when everybody's gone, so I'm sorry you gotta talk to me. And I said, is, if you could give me some documentation saying that either the mayor, the administrator, the city attorney, or somebody says we can't have it here, I would like that documentation. Because everything I have and everything I bring up, I have documentation. Or if not, then I want the council to vote yes or no on it. Because then they, the people will see who's voting yes and who's voting no. So when that comes up at election time next year, that'll be a talking point, as it should be. Because the people want to be heard. That's what I heard when I was walking that ward. You're not gonna penalize me, you're gonna penalize the people. And that's what I don't understand. I mean, if there's another council member wants to come in and talk and say something, that is fine, it's wide open. If the mayor wants to come and speak, that's wide open. So I think that's what, what, what I have a hard time with, because it is open for everyone. And then the second meeting, there was absolutely nobody here except Laura, and, uh, Scott was here. And Scott, I think you were here maybe to lock the door, you know, and that's something that I could do too if you wanted me to do it. I can open up a door and lock it. We don't need to hire extra staff or take time out of a staff to do that. So, you know, I'm trying to work together, I'm trying to work together, I, that's what I'm trying to do. And to let people be heard, because what happened here, this is a perfect example, and I'm gonna, and I've got the documentation right here. The last town hall meeting, there was a discussion about the aquatic center pool, what, what you want to call it, that it was gonna take over 20 years to pay it off, okay? There was that comment made. Then at the committee as a whole, a comment was made by a city official that it was gonna take nine years. Now, on Thursday, I was reading this that was provided by the finance director, Bill, and it says here 14 years.
Nope, correction, Your Honor. That, that's for both projects, not the aquatic center project.
Okay. So both projects is 14. How come it doesn't say nine under the aquatic center?
Bill, you can speak to that.
Yeah, if you could.
I calculated that out and sent that out with it. That's for both projects. If you take the total principal and interest that's due there, and then divide it by the collections we were collecting in the last year, you come at a little over nine years on one and a little under five on the other.
Five on the other, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. So thanks, so, so this is perfect example. Questions, ring clarity?
It is. And the, the city council, again, at a public meeting that you, you did not attend, unanimously decided that if staff is expected to be at a meeting, it's going to be one that's directed by the council, not by individual council members. And they also felt that it was not in the city's best interest to have people who are not elected stand at that podium with the city of Fergus Falls on TV answering questions as if they represented the city. No one, I want to repeat, no one on the council at that meeting or since that I am aware of has ever said anything other than they support the town halls, they appreciate the fact that you're holding them, they want you to hold those. They do not think this is the proper forum for those meetings to be held. And that's what the decision was by the entire council that was at that meeting that had the discussion. So we're going to allow other people to speak if they would like to, and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Krameyer.
Thank you.
So I, I resent the implication that I am somehow quashing people's free speech. Let's, I think that, that your comment strayed a little bit from the intent of the motion. And I'll say it again, that any, any person, any group is, is, is free to assemble in any place that they want to, to discuss whatever they want to. And there's, there's adequate free spaces in the city that are perfect for that. I could see, I could see a purely hypothetical, a group with a certain agenda to push, using the council chambers to add an air of legitimacy to the information that is being given at that meeting. So again, for the record, let me be perfectly clear that I am in no way, shape, or form opposed to any, the right of any group to gather. This is just not the appropriate venue for a certain group to come in here and say whatever they want to, and the, the vision, like it or not, is people are gonna think, oh, it happened in the city council chambers, therefore that must be somehow associated with the city's views. And no, I did not attend the town hall meetings. Will I in the future? I don't know. But I, the, from what I understand, the things, I mean, misinformation galore was given out at these meetings. There were, there were people up here speaking on city business, giving false information that, that do not represent the city and do not represent the staff. And frankly, I feel that's inappropriate. And I feel like we've wasted so much time on this issue. You, you are welcome to have a town hall meeting wherever you want to, other than town hall, city hall, in the council chambers. That's the intent of my motion.
Thank you, Tom. I just want to also just make sure that the, um, public is aware. And there has been town halls held, uh, I, I personally with council member Hicks have held town hall meetings at the museum, at the Ottertail County, uh, I'm sorry, Ottertail Power Community Rooms. There's been meetings held at Lake Alice. In 2023, all of those meetings are very easily recorded and broadcast on PEG Access. At that meeting also, the council unanimously also decided that we want to open up the, the, um, open forum at the beginning of a meeting to give people any and all opportunities to come before their elected officials without registering. So I, I resent the fact that we're making this into an issue that some people are trying to, no, we're simply saying that we want you to hold your town hall meetings, we want the people to attend, we want to hear those voices. The council as a whole, not individually, but as a group, which is how this council drives its power, made the decision that they did not feel that this was the best forum. And we have a motion to that effect, we'll vote on it, and then I think we should move on.
Would you like to hear from the public?
Sure, as soon as I, as soon as we're done up here, Bob, we'll call on the public, all right? Any other comments from the council?
I'm asking you here.
Certainly, Bob. We're gonna finish our conversation here, and then I'll call on the public. I know there's some people who'd like to speak. Yes, Scott?
I think it would be important to have an explanation of the open meeting law and how it applies in this case, where if it's just open and people show up or don't, we can potentially end up with trouble. Whereas if it's going to be something that we vote to do and it's publicized and it's all done correctly, then we're all, then we're all good. But, um, that wasn't the way these were presented. And so that puts us in kind of a, awkward position, I think.
Thirdly, Scott, thank you.
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Kwame, they actually were posted so a quorum of the council could attend, um, to try to protect the city council members in the city from having an open meeting law violation. But if they weren't advertised by the city as an official meeting of the city, and we had five council members show up, which constitute a quorum, and they're discussing city business, that's a violation of the open meeting law. Which is part of the conversation that the council had. I mean, I, I know I'm the messenger here and the scapegoat on this, and that's fine, I'm getting glares from the audience, but, um, if, if the council doesn't think this is an official city event, then we shouldn't publish it as such, and then we cannot have a quorum of members show up.
Your Honor, can I just add to my comments that I made earlier?
Yes, please, please.
And, and just, just to kind of clarify for Councilmember Krameyer, when, um, you know, you can make campaign promises, but that doesn't dictate the actions of the council. I mean, I could, I could promise that unicorns are gonna come to Fergus, but that doesn't make it so. So, I mean, by, by saying it was a campaign promise, okay, well, you probably shouldn't have promised to have meetings in this location.
May I answer that?
Sure.
I did not promise to have it here. It was offered because when we first spoke, as I mentioned before, Mr. Ruffer, as I mentioned before, I was at a meeting with a third ward council member, with Andrew Bremseth, with Rolf Nicomo, with Lynn was there, and I can't remember if Bill was there or not. And I was asking what I needed to do to have a town hall meeting. Do I need to pull a permit? Do I need to do this? Do I need to do that? And it was no, no, no. And I was asked, do you have a venue? I said, no, that's what I'm trying to do. Would you like to have it here? Oh, we can do that? And it was offered to us. That's how that came out. Now, I want to address with that podium. After that first meeting, there was so many complaints that people could not hear. And that, that's what happened, and actually that got podium got turned around for the first meeting, and that was done, I believe, by Andrew helped with that, spun that around. Because I know I didn't do it. Now, with that being said, people needed to hear what was being said because they were complaining they couldn't hear. So, you know, we're kind of in trouble if we do something, we're in trouble if we don't do something. You know, it's gonna come down to a vote, and, and that's what it's gonna come to.
Sure, just, just to clarify, nobody's in trouble for anything? Like, the podium, it's just an example. So I'm, I'm, we're not, we're splitting hairs over things, like, we, I, I, no, I don't blame you for using a microphone, I don't blame city staff for saying, yeah, you can use this room. The council had a discussion, I, I'm gonna finish here now. The council had a discussion, and the council unanimously, not everyone had the exact same agreement, but we had a discussion as adults, we came to the agreement that that was what the council wanted to bring forward to the committee whole, which is what happened. We're gonna hear from the public, and then the council's gonna take a vote. We don't need to, you know, we don't have to go back and really hash everything. We really don't. I mean, we're gonna make a, take a vote, and then we're gonna move on.
And I agree, and I agree. You know, maybe it was a poor choice of words. I know that others of you have used a poor choice of words in the past too, but.
Be the first one to admit that that's.
Yeah. Anyway, um, that's kind of where we're at with that. Andrew, did you have something to?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Krameyer, you're absolutely right. I encourage you to use this building, and I still don't have an issue with it, but the council is discussing this as a whole, and I take my direction from the council. And if they determine this is not an appropriate venue, then we have to respect that, and I certainly will, and, and I know you will too. I think I went on the record last Wednesday saying the same thing, that I, yes, I absolutely encourage you. I, at the first meeting, sat right there and said, this is the people's house. My views on that haven't changed. Now, as I mentioned on Wednesday as well, I would much prefer that we figure out a way that the whole council can be involved in this venue and make it more meaningful so the people's voices are heard by all the decision-makers, and, and make it more official in that regard. So that's my hope in this whole discussion, is we find a way to, to host this thing quarterly, that's more official, or we find a way to have the council buy in. But we're not there, that's not the discussion that we're having tonight.
You know, I guess I, I would call it growing pains, maybe.
And that was, Andrew touched on something that, yeah, maybe that's kind of where, you know, we look for compromise, and, you know, maybe the compromise is that, you know, quarterly, you know, we hold one in city hall, and we post that as, uh, you know, as a, as a official meeting, so that then any, any council members that, you know, wish to turn up, you know, can, and we won't violate any open laws, and that, that would happen, say, I'm suggesting quarterly, but, you know, maybe that's kind of the compromise that when, you know, it's not all for, all for one and, and none on the other.
Right.
Laura?
And, you know, um, Al and I had a discussion last week regarding some of these possible changes as we move forward. I agree that this is the, you know, this is the place for the citizens, 100%. I feel like we need to find some common ground on this, because, um, you know, they deserve that. And the town hall meetings, that is their space, this is their space, this gives them the opportunity to bring forth questions, but not only that, but solutions. So if we can find some common ground on this, I think that would be the benefit for everybody.
Thank you, thank you, Laura. I'm gonna, I'm gonna open up, I know there's some people.
Ben, I got one, one more thing.
Yeah, please, Scott.
And I agree with Anthony and Laura too, but I don't think that this room's gonna be big enough. The first meeting we had, it was like 70 people, and I think there's what, 50-some seats there? I'm not sure. I believe that if we, if the council does a, a town hall, we're gonna have to go someplace a lot bigger than this room. Because now that we're getting a lot of publicity about it, and it's a good, it's a good thing. This room doesn't, I don't think the people care what room they're in when they want to speak about the city. And if we're all there listening, if it's, uh, if it's in auditorium at the school, I think we, we held one up there back when I was first on the council, maybe 10 years ago. And, uh, I think that, that's where we need to go, and that's a compromise I think is right. Um, I just don't think this room is gonna be big enough. If we, the council does it ourselves, I think it's gonna be a lot bigger than that. It's gonna be not an hour and a half, it's probably gonna be two or three hours. There's a lot of people also that want to talk about a lot of things. So that's my take.
Thanks. The council can vote on this, they can, and, I honestly think that if you start to make too many rules around it, you're gonna lose the spirit that is being achieved by the people that are in the room, um, so.
One more thing, if I may.
Please, Al, go ahead, and then we'll, we'll call on the audience.
This is a quote here. "An educated public is vital to our survival as a free people." That's attributed to America's third president, Thomas Jefferson. We need to always remember that. I want us to always have dialogue. I do not want everybody to agree, because then we've got a bunch of lemmings. We don't want everybody to agree. We want to have discussion, we want to have hard discussions. And that's what's gonna make this city great. Hard discussions is gonna make this city very great.
I couldn't agree with you more, Al, thank you for that. Yeah, please.
I saw that quote earlier today on an email that was floating around the community with misinformation, trying to encourage people to come tonight. So that's, that's fitting that I saw that twice in the same day. But I think to that point, Councilmember Krameyer, is that's what this council's asking for, is to have a format so we can have an educated populace. Let's make this a legitimate event where the right people can answer questions and provide information, so our public is informed and they have the right, accurate information to know exactly what's happening, and not somebody from the public trying to decipher the capital improvement plan of the city and pass it off as a funded document and make everybody think we're spending all this money that we're not. So I think the question should be, do you, Councilmember Krameyer, is are you willing to collaborate with the fellow council, your fellow council members, and host a meeting that we can accomplish just that?
Of course.
Then I think we're, we have the common ground that I think we're looking for.
And that's what, that's why I always invited everyone. That's why everybody was invited. You know, I, I happen to have, you know, just so you, let's see, where'd it go here? You know, on the flyer that was always sent out, it says, everyone is welcome to express their opinion. Everyone. And, you know, that first night that we had it, it was fantastic to see. There was a lot of excitement, and it was a lot of fun. So I, I thought that was very enjoyable, and now we've got it narrowed down to a few things that we can actually talk about things, and maybe, you know, uh, this, this next week, I was planning on talking with Brian here, maybe about the Stanton Avenue situation that, you know, I, I mean, I drove down there, like I said, and it, it's a tight squeeze in there. And if there was some other possible way, if we could look at that. So, thank you.
It, just, just to be clear, I think, again, on the, on, talking about the way the council works together at Stanton Avenue, there's gonna be two public hearings on that, there's gonna be plenty of time for the public to come to the council, to get the accurate information from city staff, and then have staff respond to that in, in a way. So I think that there's some limitations to the town hall where just a bunch of people get in a room and throw around a bunch of ideas. It's, it's healthy, but when you're talking about specific projects, I think it's really important that they hear information that's accurate from the staff and not drum up a bunch of emotion around the, uh, issues without the accurate information. So I'm gonna call on the audience now, who, who would like to talk, and then we're gonna call for a vote on this and move on. Yes, please.
Do I have to come up here?
Yes, you do, please. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Kathy Colling. I live 509 East Channing. Very succinctly, what I hear between the lines here is a whole lot of control. And what I also hear is kind of an insult, a back of the hand to the people of Fergus Falls, suggesting that we have to have the information put out to us in a way so we don't have all this misinformation as though we can't think for ourselves. Really? You, you need to take a look at the, what's gonna come out of this. You can give me all the rules and your details that maybe you've had a chance to put up You can give me all the rules and your details that maybe you've had a chance to put up here, but I think it could backlash. And when you look at voters coming down the road, you're insulting them. It's really insulting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Bob, did you have some comments?
Sure. Well, it's not an easy thing to get up in front of all you smart people, I'll tell ya. I've been coming to several meetings trying to really find out what it's all about. And as uncomfortable as it is and embarrassing, because I'm not educated like everybody, I decided to put my embarrassment aside to say a few things. These town hall meetings were actually my idea two years ago. I approached you, Mayor, to have meetings about the pandemic, all that everybody was going through. I thought, "We've gotta come together and talk about these things." And I'm not faulting you for not having meetings, but it's just for the record, I did approach you, and several times I've come to you to talk about things, so I appreciated that. Councilman Kwame, I talked to you also about some conversations I had with Al and other people a couple of years ago. And I had a desire to be involved with the city, bring my talents, my skills, to prove even a fool can offer good things. And when I brought it to Al and some others, we had just some informal meetings. I wanted to make a presentation detailing what it could look like, and the conversation wasn't about here. And I never gave the presentation, but years later, then Al ran, and we all of a sudden had these town hall meetings. And I was just overjoyed because as nervous as people get, finally we'd have a voice to our city to talk about issues that really affect us. And I'm sorry about the format that is presented in the city, as organized and as beautiful you guys are, and as smart as you are, the people are left out of the equation. We need a dialogue in order to share our concerns. And the more time elapses on this, this whole country, by the way, it's May 1st, it's loyalty day. Nobody knew. The flags were flying. And, and so, before you vote on this, you need more of a dialogue with your constituents to know what we're thinking. And I commend Al for providing a venue where some of us are brave enough to get up and talk about important things, to make a difference in our community. Okay?
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We have a motion in a second. We're gonna call for a vote here shortly.
Mark Layton, 1802 Mini Hoota Drive, Fergus Falls. I'm very discouraged. I transcribed my presentation at the last town hall meeting. And I'm requesting the misinformation that I may have given 26 years. It's been made, nine years. I also said, I think the Cannon Falls roundabouts, I don't think it was Cannon Falls. There was another city south of Minneapolis that was ruined by roundabouts. All the information I presented at that meeting came out of your budget, the 2023 budget. So when you talk about misinformation from someone talking at this podium, I'd like to know what it is. And then when you talk about unanimous vote at a city staff councilman's retreat, I didn't read anywhere that it was open for the public, and there were two members missing. So it wasn't unanimous. The council needs to listen to the public. They haven't, and I'm still concerned they won't. Town hall meetings are gonna continue. You can have your county council meetings if you want, quarterly, monthly, daily. But the public will continue to see our retreats, our own town hall meetings. Andrew, I look forward to your reply, and I look for honesty out of this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak before we call for the vote? We have a motion?
And what's exactly the vote now?
Tom, would you like to?
Oh, so long ago. A motion that, that town hall, you know, or, yeah, I mean, I guess call it whatever you will, but, you know, town hall-type meetings are not to be held in the council chambers without express approval from the council by resolution, or however that might look.
Who's directing staff for that? Is that...
You know, and, and if I may, I just, I again feel the need to clarify that, that I'm encouraging anybody to hold town hall meetings. You know, the gentleman that came up and spoke, I mean, you know, if you wanted to have meetings during the pandemic, you could have, you could have had meetings. You could have printed up flyers, and you could have found, I don't know, you could sit outside and do it, however, depending on what the restrictions were at the time. You know, I mean, any, any one of us as citizens can, can assemble. That's one of the things that makes our country great. And we can all assemble, and we can talk about whatever we want to. So, no, I'm not infringing on anyone's free speech rights. And, you know, I feel like that's been implied a few times, that we're not, we're not killing the town hall meetings. We're saying this venue, due to the fact that it adds an air of legitimacy to whatever is said at these meetings, is not the appropriate place for these meetings. That's it. Don't read any deeper into it than that. Please.
Thanks, Tom.
So we have a motion. Jim has a second.
All favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries. Was that aye and aye? Two? Okay. Six to two, that motion carries. Under new business, no new business, but under miscellaneous announcements, I believe Scott Kwame had an announcement he wanted to make regarding a cleanup effort that took place over the weekend. Scott, please.
Over the weekend, there was a young fellow named Justin Anderson. Is that the right name?
Yes.
Yeah. And he's a high school student here in Fergus Falls. And actually, this came together some time ago, but the activity was this, just yesterday, Sunday. Justin's a high school student that is a member of something called the MAP Stars, M-A-A-P Stars. And he put together a group that chose to do some cleanup work at our city parks. And so I wanted to give them a shout out, a thank you, and I'm not sure, Gene, if you were expecting to comment on it as well, but that'd be great if you wanted to. I, I was able to join with their group and do a little bit of work around Lake Alice. But they had a number of kids that came and picked up a lot of garbage, and they went to a couple of other parks too, as far as I know. And I just really wanted to give a shout out and a thank you to Justin and his, his group of students for their work yesterday.
They've been working on it for months. Initially, it was scheduled for Earth Day, but it was snowed, so it snowed, so. That's why it was delayed. But they had, they had a great plan and worked with our Park and Rec, McJohnson, to make everything happen.
Okay, great. Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Gene. Other miscellaneous announcements, there is a Phase II ribbon cutting taking place this Thursday, May 4th, right across the river, behind the senior center, at 11:30 a.m. Public is welcome to attend, of course. May 10th is our next committee, the whole meeting. And May 10th also, there will be a special meeting of the city council to hear an appeal of a denial to THC license to be held immediately following the city council commit the whole meeting here in the council chambers. And then May 15th is our next council meeting.
With that... Mayor Ben, just one thing. It's actually maybe a question for Lynn, or you can answer it. As the vote went about the town hall meeting, is that gonna be in the minutes? Who voted yes? Who voted no?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure of that. Thank you.
Certainly. It always is. If you read the minutes...
I didn't know if you knew who voted.
Anyways, it was, yeah, I noted that, and it was in the meetings, as it always is. It's required by law.
Thank you.